Let's get the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order. Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, February 21st, 2019, 7:00 p.m. Can we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And we did lose one of our members of a couple of our boards. Bud Babcheck died this week, so, and Thursday, I think Saturday is his funeral. So if we could just have a moment of silence. And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan is the exception.
Didn't see anything.
Commissioner Clausen. Commissioner Merchant.
Present.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Callahan.
Second.
Motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to communications. I need a motion to receive departmental activity reports, Marine City Area run reports, the planning commission minutes, January 14th, and the planning commission annual report for 2018.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on the communications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed up upon by the city manager as necessary. Rosalie.
Rosalie Squires, 211 Michigan, and Mariners Landing. I'm the longest resident of Mariners Landing condos. You know, I've just have some concern about a proposal in here for a recreation program. Now, I'm for, all for recreation. Recreation, probably I like it more than anybody. And recreation actually comes from the word creation, which means you get away and you kind of recreate your feelings and your, rest your mind and things like that. The only thing that concerns me is here, well, there's a lot of things that concern me about this. And, well, one of the things is I, the price, this $120, which it doesn't spell out is if the $120 is per family, per person. I think it'd be hard to get $120 out of people. And the reason I say this, particularly people with children, because when we started to, in our schools, have play for pay, pay to play sports, which was $100 at the time. And I just, out of curiosity, went to the meeting because I thought, how are parents going to react to this? And I was very surprised how angry parents were that they had to pay $100. So I think that that will be a problem. Another thing that I have a big problem with is that a lot of these things are just, we're recreating the wheel here. We already have a very nice library that we added on to, and we provide, provide the facility. Yeah, everybody pitches in throughout the county to provide the services on a library millage, but the building that the library is in is the responsibility of Marine City. So we already, as a city, are providing something. And a lot of these same programs, they have, they have, you know, things for children and even these art classes they've had there, because I've taken some. There's a lot of places in town that we can take yoga. I've taken those classes. I know there's cooking classes here, but you know, now on YouTube, you can see people cooking and there's a cooking show. I mean, there's a lot you can learn just from YouTube. And also another thing, too, is first aid. The, there's other places in town that offers first aid courses. And I think we're just really create, recreating a wheel. Another thing is that, and this did bother me, is it said, you know, we could use the area for showers. We have a lot of businesses in towns that provide ways to have showers, and they're not very expensive. I mean, we have the Rivertown Banquet Hall, we have the Lions Club. You can have a shower at our commissioner here's Little Bar. You can have it at, they just put a big addition on the fish market. You can do it at Anita's Place in Riviera. I know I'm having a retirement party for a friend in May at Anita's and, because that's one of her favorite foods is pizza. And I'm really surprised how really in expective it is. But I just don't think that our government should be competing against these businesses that we've worked so hard to have in place. So I just have a problem with this proposal. I think we're recreating a we, the wheel, and I just don't really think this is necessary. And that's just my opinion. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Questions, concerns, additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to approval of the minutes for the City Commission regular meeting, February 7th, 2019.
I'll move. We approve the City Commission minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions, concerns, additions or deletions? Roll call vote, please. Oh, motion, no, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to consent agenda. Need a motion to approve a business license for Marine City Viking Fitness, business license for VJ Storage, and the Dairy Queen, which is under new ownership.
Motion to approve the agenda. Consent agenda.
Any questions or concerns on this? Roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes. Moving on to unfinished business ordinance, 219-02 zoning ordinance. We did forget last week, we were going to actually have a, or last meeting was to have a, remove something from this ordinance, wasn't it?
Several of the commissioners had expressed some concern to me about the nautical mile overlay and the nautical mile ordinance, and wanted to, in essence, pull that out of the approval for this zoning ordinance to, I guess, further review and, and see what we wanted to do with that. I understand that the last meeting, everything was approved, and with that having been done, we can revisit this vote, being that this is the meeting right after. It's the only opportunity that you would have to redo the vote. At this point, I would kind of defer to the attorney on how they would properly make that motion to amend the previous one.
You would have two motions. You would do a motion to rescind, vote on the motion to rescind, and then do a separate motion to approve the ordinance in the revised format.
And that, in essence, would be with the exception of the nautical mile ordinance and map amendment. So everything else would be approved, except we would pull that out and revisit that separately.
So can I get a motion to rescind?
I'll make a motion to rescind the previous motion.
Support.
Motion, support. Everyone clear on what we're doing? Is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Now you would have a motion to approve the second reading minus the overlay.
And the nautical mile.
Nautical mile.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of ordinance 2019-002, with the exception of removing section 160.175, the nautical mile district overlay.
Support.
Motion, support. Questions or concerns on this?
Actually, I think it's not 175.
160.175.
Can, can they just do the references to the nautical mile district? Because there's, there's a couple chapters here.
Just say it, just say it.
For the nautical mile overlay.
And the map amendment.
And the map amendment.
Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to ordinance number 2019-003, the pension board. This will be the second reading and adoption. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to, for the second reading, to approve ordinance 2019-003 of the retirement system section.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Moving on to board vacancy for the pension board. We have one, we have one application, so I would like to make a motion to appoint Rosalie Squires, 211 Michigan, to the pension board.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to in-car cameras. This is ratification vote for the actual, the firm number, right?
Yes, sir.
And that is $1,19,521.97.
With that, I did get him to approve the five-year price of the storage fee. So it'll be a set fee for five years.
And that's for?
That will be.
Body cameras and?
That'll be for body cameras and in-car videos.
In-car videos.
Yes, sir.
And that's about the same price you're paying for storage? What do you?
Currently.
You've got a current fee that you're just replacing, right?
The current fee that we, we pay through L3 is a maintenance agreement, which covers back office software and any upgrades to the firmware in our current in-car system. It's 1,800, somewhere in there. So I do want to, I do want to say that, before we get to the, the body cameras, on the letter that I drafted where it says the total of, it's 1,500 per year, I made a typo, it should be 1,800 per year. A little typo on my part. I apologize for that.
Okay, so first, we're working on the ratification vote for the in-car body, or in-car cameras.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know what installation's going to cost you?
So I talked to our current installer from Synergy, who just upfitted all of our patrol cars. He said 500 per device, which it should be covered under the, my capital outlay through salvage vehicle funds. There's enough funding there, it's just how, so $3,000 of the total project is going to be grant money, which should bring the total down about 21,000 some change, which leaves me 4,000 to help cover the installation. So it's 500 per car.
Can I get a motion for the ratification of the in-car cameras we talked about in the previous meeting?
And this, this motion should contain the exact amount, which we voted last time that it would be under 20.
I'll make a motion to ratify the in-car cameras at a cost of $19,521.97.
Second.
Motion, second. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we're moving on to the body camera portion of the package. So the total now is going to be 18 for the, no, that's just your cloud storage, though, correct? $1,800.
1,800 is for the cloud storage for, it'll be technically be 10 devices. Six, six body cams. And what he said is we, so we'll have a docking station at the department. That technically has to get hooked up to the cloud, so that'll be the seventh, and then three in-car cameras, total 10. So if you do the $15 a month, times 12, times the 10, equals 1,800.
Plus what the cost, plus the 5, 449.72?
That, that will be the initial upfront cost for the purchase of the three body cams, the docking station, camera mounts, four-year extended warranty, and the cloud storage.
So you need a total of 72.4972 for the two things, or we're just doing the cameras?
This, this is just for the cameras. The 54, 4972 is for the cameras and the storage for, for the first year. So next year, we'll have another bill for the 1,800.
Got it. Thank you.
So can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the GTAC body cameras at the cost of $5,449.72.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions for the chief?
One more. Do you know what installation's going to cost you on this?
This, this installation being hopefully included. Yeah. They're going to, it's.
Think you can do that yourself, right?
It'll be a full training day, yes.
And they do provide the training with it?
Yeah.
How soon do you think they'll have them for you, plus the, your rules and regulations?
So I'm three-quarters of the way done with the policy. I couldn't finish it, depending on whether this passed or moved forward. And I got to change some numbers in there for the retention policy that I have, you know, for, from the state. So I got to change the numbers on how we, how long we have to keep certain videos. So once the training is done, before they're pushed into service, I will have a full policy enacted.
Now, is this going to match surrounding communities, so we're all on the same page, or?
Well, I, other agencies are still up in the air whether or not they even want to go with the, with the GTAC. I think Clay wanted to go with the provision, which then could set their policy in a different tangent than what my, my policy's going to be. We tried initially to get a county-wide policy.
Right.
But now the different departments might be going different, different avenues.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to new business and ordinance number 2019-004, prohibition of marijuana establishments. Introduction in first reading. Can I get a motion to approve introduction?
Make a motion to approve introduction of the prohibition of marijuana establishment ordinance.
Support.
Motion, support. Questions or concerns about the, about this? Lisa?
So I guess all we're doing here is preventing it at this point until we see more structure, rules, regulations formulated before we can move forward, so that we have the opportunity to either do something or not do something.
Correct. The State of Michigan is not going to issue final regulations on these programs until probably December of this year. They, when they passed the law, they gave themselves a year to roll out the regulations. So there's a lot of missing information at this juncture. As we discussed last time, you have two choices. You can do what a lot of communities are doing and do this prohibition, wait it out, see what the regs end up looking like, and you can always repeal your prohibition in favor of moving forward with your planning commission developing some criteria and locations for these establishments. You can't do it the opposite. You can't allow it and then pull the allowance. So that's why a lot of communities are, are going with the prohibition. You can always repeal the prohibition in favor of an ordinance. So what you're looking at right now is a reading of a first ordinance that prohibits the activities. We would then, if this passes, notify the State of Michigan that the City of Marine City is a prohibition city at this juncture, so they'll have that on file, and they will not accept or begin to process applications that impact your community.
How are some of the other communities doing these medical facilities, like Oakland County? That's, are they allowing that, or is that separate, or is that?
That's a separate, that was a separate program. If you remember, on medical marijuana facilities, if you did nothing, then you were prohibiting them, and you elected to do nothing, so you don't have any medical marijuana facility rights in your community as we're sitting here today. That was a mixed bag. A lot of communities did nothing and prohibited them, and some communities welcomed them. So it's, it's, it's all about, you know, what you want to do in your local jurisdiction here.
Any other questions or comments on it?
It's my belief there will be places that will be selling marijuana. It's not like if you don't do it, you're not going to create a statewide shortage.
Well, I think people also have to understand, even though we're not allowing the sales, place to sell, people are still going to have it.
It doesn't have anything to do with it.
It doesn't, yeah, exactly. So it's going to be here, it's going to be in the community. It's just legal now, even though, it's always been in the community. So, yeah, this just stops until we can formulate better rules and then regulate it properly, if we want to do it.
Right.
And see how the state rolls it out, too. That's going to be interesting, on how they're going to set up the.
The criteria?
Yes.
The lotteries, the draw cards, nobody really knows what they're going to do. So if you think about it in, in perspective with the City of Marine City, what if you had 10 applicants who wanted to have one of these facilities? How are you, how do you pick and how do you limit? Nobody knows the answers to those questions yet. Can you limit, can, or do you have to accept all 10? If you, if you don't accept all 10, who do you pick? And how do you pick it? So there's some communities that had lotteries, there's some communities that had, you know, it's all over the board. The problem is, you're sitting here right now without an ordinance, is that if somebody decided they did want to do this in Marine City, and they started the process at the state, there's some risk to you that you haven't done anything. You know, you haven't gone to the planning commission and put something in place, and you haven't prohibited it. You're kind of in a little bit of danger zone right now.
So once we do whatever we do with this, then we can also move forward with our planning commission and everything else.
You can do that whenever you want. You could wait until the regs roll out and say, you know, maybe we should take a look at this, and if you find that it's attractive to your community, then you can repeal the prohibition.
Everyone good?
We still understand that the, under the feds, it's still illegal.
Right.
Careful on your votes this season.
Mm-hmm. You know those coast guards? Give me a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Moving on to King Road Park bids. Must be yours. Oh.
Never mind.
Go ahead, Mike.
Questions or?
You want to give us a little overlay on?
Yeah. The bids came in quite a bit lower than what we anticipated. Hess Asphalt has done some work in town for us, and I think they're going to do a great job for us to do the parking lot at the beach, and the Mariner parking lot also. The $2,000, I'm going to ask for extra.
King Road.
King Road first.
Do you want to do King Road first?
Yeah, King Road's first on.
Sorry. Okay.
Asphalt Unlimited.
Asphalt Unlimited came in, the lowest bid, about $3,000 under what we estimated. This is just for the paving part only. We're going to be putting our own stone in, our own subbase, and they're coming in and paving it. And as soon as the weather breaks, we're going to be jumping right on this. Yes.
The basketball court.
Mm-hmm.
And you got ice rink on there. What, what was the plan?
The plan was to put the four-by-fours around there, and then sheet it with ice, or sheet it with plastic. That was the plan.
Since I heard about what Algenac did, I would recommend that we take a look at it.
We did take a look at that. We would probably have to extend our basketball behind it, because we're, if we put the asphalt curb behind our basketball hoops right now, someone's going to nail on that curb and fall when they do a layup. There's not enough room for them to travel through.
Can we extend it?
We probably could, but I didn't get a price on that.
No, but I'd like to see us kind of look at that. I mean, it would solve you having to take, put something up, take something down, you know what I'm saying? They claim it works really, really well down there.
But their, their court is not marked also. Our courts could be marked. I don't know what the water's going to do to the paint over the winter time.
It's just a matter of repainting in the spring, I mean.
Is, now, you, you just use the same paint that we do in the regular parking lots?
Yeah, just the marking paint.
Yeah. I'd just like to see us look at, just for the fact that it's a little, I, I know it comes up late, but it's only because I found out about it late, but I guess their process and system works really, really well, and it's a lot simpler than you having to take something up and put something down, and.
I could take a look at it and see what they're going to charge us. You know, maybe put something in, maybe add five feet on both sides of court, on the end of the courts, and put curb around, somehow seal it so the water can't get between the curb and the, the asphalt.
Have you seen the one down there?
Yes, I have.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, it just seemed like a real good idea, and they said they've done it a few times now, and it's worked very, very well, so I'm just looking at making it easier for you guys instead of.
The other, the problem with Algenac's also is it's black. Black grabs the heat. A white tarp makes it, makes it not as, not as hot and keeps the ice better.
Yeah, but those tarps don't last that long either. I mean, I, I did the research on those. They're okay, but they don't have a very long lifespan.
Well, if I, if I can deal with the amount of money that we're going to spend for the tarps and the four-by-fours, we'll take a look at that and get that done.
Yeah, I, I just think it's worthwhile looking into, and if it doesn't pan out, then you move forward with what you got, I guess.
Okay. Well, you got them out there, you're going to take a look at it, see what they're going to charge. If it comes to the same amount of money as the tarp and the four-by-fours, we'll just go ahead and do it that way.
For those that aren't exactly aware, what we're talking about is Algenac uses a permanent border system around their, around their courts and holds the water, and they actually have to seal the manhole shut. And then when they want to drain it, they just open it up and drains off, and instead of using plastic or, and wood retainers. But it, there is more upfront cost on it, but it's less work for you.
Less work.
So that's what we're looking at, so. Can we get a motion to approve the bid that we did receive? And you wanted to go with Asphalt Unlimited?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for the Asphalt Unlimited and for $8,875.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Asphalt Unlimited for $8,875. With, with the exception of looking into the additional.
Yep.
Idea.
So is that a second with a friendly amendment?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Can you have that?
So, so just to get an understanding of this bid, if the additional cost for the, the tarp and the wood is no greater than what it would cost to do the pavement?
Then he does.
That's what you're approving?
I just think we should look at it.
So we need a second, though, right? Or is that a motion and a second?
You, you need to accept the amendment.
I accept the amendment.
So now you can vote on the modified motion. Was a roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant. Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
All right, moving on to beach parking this time.
Now, we're at beach.
We're at the beach this time. Sounds a lot nicer.
I wish we were at the beach.
The, we received a bid for the paving of the beach in Mariner Park, which came in quite a bit lower than what we anticipated also. Very much lower.
Yeah.
I'm asking for the extra $2,000 to be included in this. So whether there, maybe we can get it, the sidewalk paved behind the guardrail to the parking lot.
Can I also ask, okay, so you're at the pavilion. Are, are you, is this going to be an open space so that people can access in it?
Nope, you're going to have both, you're going to have a handicap by the guardrail.
Okay.
And then down by the, the end down there? Right there, there'll be another walkway going up there.
Okay.
Okay, then you're going to have six-foot walkway in front of the parking spots.
Oh, along here?
Yep.
That'll go all the way over?
All the way over.
Yay.
That's where we start.
Is that curb then between the...
No, it'll be parking block.
Parking block.
It'll be anchored in like this, 18 feet out.
Yep.
And it's going to leave six feet for walkway in front of it.
Okay.
And I'd like to bring that sidewalk from the beach all the way up to meet that.
Great, yes. Wonderful.
Is $2,000 going to be enough?
Yes.
So we want $19,850 plus the $2,000?
Plus the $2,000.
So I'd need a motion on this.
So $21,850? I make a motion to approve Hess Asphalt from Clyde Township for $21,850 for the Marine City Beach and Mariner Park parking improvements.
Second.
Motion second. Any other questions on it? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fosson?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. You got something, Mike?
Yep, thanks.
Anything else for us?
Not this time, next week.
Okay. All right, moving on to Blue Water Shopper. No.
No.
Recreational Proposal. Skip over that one.
Yeah, we've got Representatives David Wagner and April Morrow here from Life Skills to go over their proposal and answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm April Morrow.
David Wagner.
From Life Skill Centers. We're here tonight to present to you the recreation proposal for the city of Marine City. As Rose Lee had mentioned, I was just at Anita's this evening with my family for dinner, and it's wonderful. My boys are down the street playing basketball. So we are, we've been members of the community for, since 2009.
Yeah, going on 10 years. May of 2009 was when we started running our day program for adults with developmental disabilities out of the building just down the street here. So we've been in the area for a while, and you may have seen some of the folks that we serve throughout the community. So we're looking at a way of extending our presence here and being stronger members of the community.
There has been some interest in leasing the space right now that we're proposing as a potential community center. But we first thought maybe that the community center would bring more to Marine City than just a commercial tenant. So in your packets, I believe, is our proposal. We're here if you have any questions, if you'd like more information. I know the, the city has, in the past, had a rec department that maybe didn't go over so well. This is new to us as well, but we have a lot of experience with recreation, skill building, pre-employment.
Building programs.
Yeah, over 30 years. So we want to make a presence in the community and make this work. Our staff right now, we, we have already connected with a few folks who would be interested in teaching classes, and if, in the packet, there's a potential schedule. And we've connected with a couple instructors already. We really would want to, if we were to move forward, do a survey of the residents and see where the interest is, so we could provide things that meet that need. I know there was concern about the fee. The fee of $100, $120 per, is per household, per year. And that would break down to about $10 per month, per home, if someone were to decide to join. They would get a discounted rate on programs. They would be open to Marine City residents and the greater community. Any questions?
So the $120 annually?
Yes.
That's just to get you in, then you have to also pay for the programs?
Yeah, it would be like a $2 or $3 fee per course. It wouldn't be anything substantial.
Cover materials, things like that.
And is this just for, as you mentioned, like challenged?
No, no, it's open to everyone in the community.
Okay, so it's...
Our specialty is for folks with developmental disabilities, but we're starting to branch out. Marine City right, or I'm sorry, in Port Huron, we're right now potentially exploring doing community gardens at one of our facilities to bring the greater community in. So it's just another extension of what we already do.
So could you just explain to me, how are you different from, like, the River Rec Teen Zone for teenagers and the Washington Life Center and library programs?
Yeah, I think from the Washington, the, the senior center and the teen, is that we would encompass the whole range. There's not an age limit, whereas the Washington Center is geared towards seniors, and the Riveret is geared towards the teens. We would be from, you know, toddlers, doing things like a parent-tat playgroup, Parents' Night Out. It wouldn't be, it would be inclusive of all ages.
So it's not age-specific?
Right, right. And again, we would, if we were to move forward, do a survey of the community to see where the, the interest lies.
I've got a few concerns. One of the things, too, the Washington Life Center isn't just for seniors, and it's an all-age thing. They have a $10 a year per person, 15 for couples. So it's very reasonable to go there. And, and I've got some of the same concerns. First, I would like to have seen what the facility looks like. I think the cost is going to be an issue for a lot of people. I mean, we had a lot of these same programs, and people went and joined just because they didn't want to pay the small fee for the program, let alone a annual fee. Then we do have a number of facilities offering a lot of the same stuff. I think one of the things, the biggest things that people wanted us to bring back was the swimming.
Yes.
And, and they like, would like that one. I know our C, Fire Department does offer a CPR class. We do have the Riveret Teen Center coming in. How are we, how, how is the liability in that handled? Is it all through them?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we'd cover it. We've already looked into it. So we have liability insurance coverage already, and our instructors would also have to hold their own individual liability, depending on what they're doing. I think yoga instructors would have to have, like, a higher level, but most of them carry that liability insurance already themselves.
Okay, because there's, there's just a lot of, I saw what you had your study on, but I, I guess, based on the fact of what we've been running into before, I think your figures are a little unrealistic of what you think you're going to make on this, based on the fact that for the small amount we had going, we couldn't keep it running with all that we had. The problem we also run into is that all the other townships are offering so many other programs, we couldn't compete with them. And, and I thought you did some type of study a couple times already, didn't you? You did one on who used it, and we also tried to do one on getting people to tell us what they wanted.
We've done a couple surveys in the past.
So... I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I, we're, we're not here to, to, to make money off of anyone. It's just, you know, something to, to bring to the community, just a break-even point. We're already here, we've already owned the building, and see, you know, where it could go. It could go into summer camps, it could, this is new to us as well. So it's just, just a small proposal to kind of start out, see where it goes. If not, then we move on.
And then one thing to clarify about this proposal is what they're asking for from us. In the past, with our Recreation Director, we had part-time staff, not just the Recreation Director, but also people that ran the programs and some of the lifeguards for the swim program, and that cost us about $40,000 a year. What they're looking for from the city for this is, in essence, to be a sole source provider through a contract, and what we would be doing is helping to market and do the mailings to the community.
More of a partnership, yeah.
Yeah, potentially one to four mailings a year, a mailing to every address in the community, every, every home in essence, would cost about $2,000.
Each mailing?
Each mailing. So if we do one mailing, it'd be $2,000, and if we do, you know, one mailing every quarter, it'd be $8,000 a year.
Were you planning on sending those out, like, with the water bills, like we used to do before?
That's something that we could do, but initially, we'd want to do probably an individual mailing to, if, if we approved a, a contract with them, to let the community know that they're there, and the terms of the contract, and what's available for them.
So, just to help me understand this a little better, so the city is, like, subcontracting their parks and rec out to this group?
In essence, that's what it would be, yes.
Is the Planning Commission working on a, on a recreation program right now?
Not a recreation program. They're just working on reviewing our parks and what assets we have in all of our parks. In essence, doing, doing a survey of that, and potentially what would be beneficial in the future for parks. Not recreation at all.
And those of you that, we never had, our parks and recs were always separate. Our rec department was a rec department that didn't, and Mike's always taking care of the parks through DPW, so we, we can't really use them, parks and rec together. It's just the recreation part of it that's...
Are you thinking you're going to get the non-residents in here at that $240?
It could be adjusted.
I mean, that's a, that's a high figure.
I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd rather see us put something like this out to the community first, because I don't think people have seen this proposal, and see if they have interest in it first before we... I, I guess I'd like to see what they think about it, you know?
Completely fair.
I'd like to see what, if we posted this out there and took a little bit of time to let people read this over and say, hey, if you read this, are you interested? Would you be willing to pay? You know, I guess that'd be my thing.
And get some feedback from, for classes, you know?
Before we jump into it.
Maybe ask them if they would like, you know, is this what they would like to see? Maybe they give you some more direction for the classes.
I know, I, I, I actually live in New Baltimore, and our parks and rec is kind of in flux right now. And I have two young children, and our family and our friends are kind of disappointed with the offerings that we have right now, because we love to be in our community and being able to connect with other families. So I think this is what younger families are looking for, and that's why we are bringing it to you.
And you should word that in there.
In there.
Yes. Yeah, if you're going to put this out to the, to everybody, and I agree with that, yeah, I would certainly change the format of this. Okay.
So can we do that?
If we wanted to do some type of mailing or something, we would need to check the budget, see if we have some money to do a mailer, talking about, you know, $2,000 to each resident. The next broad mailing that we would have, unless we included it in the water bills that obviously don't all go out at the same time, would be our summer tax bill going out at the end of June.
Couldn't we post this on our website and use Facebook like everybody else does?
Doesn't catch everyone, though.
It doesn't catch everyone, but it's going to catch a lot, and then that person's going to tell that person, who's going to tell that person. That's usually how it goes around here. I mean, it's a good source to get it out a little bit faster than waiting on a mailing. I mean, you can do it either way, but I just know that...
Whatever your preferences.
They look a lot for their information there, so, you know, and you put, Chris puts a lot of stuff out that they're finally looking at.
It's good.
By subcontracting this out to their group, is it going to save the city money? Or, I mean, because you're not...
As, as I said, the programming that we had in the past, we budgeted about $40,000 a year. And this, it would all depend on how much marketing we did a year for the program.
This kind of reminds me of, like, a mini YMCA.
And what we offered, too, because the, the previous rec had, we had to have a contract with the school for the pool, and that was a fairly, you know, sizable section, you know, portion of it, wasn't it?
It's a couple thousand dollars a year.
Mm-hmm. So, and right now, we have that, we have suspended it. We haven't initiated to renew it at this time.
And I know that was one of our biggest thing that people wanted.
And it's one of our biggest draws, is the pool.
Yep.
So, Ms. Mayer, can I just ask?
Sure.
So the activities here would, would not be taking place on city-owned property, correct?
No.
Be in a private facility? One of the concerns you have to watch, I think Mr. Merchant was semi-raising this issue, is, is whether or not the community gets a perception of implied authority that it's a city program versus a private program. And whether or not if Mr. Merchant's children went there, do they believe that they're attending a city-sponsored activity versus a private activity? So that would have to be made clear. We probably have to be an additional insured on the various policies. Because in a sense, what you're doing is you're, you're taking on the advertisement role of a private entity, perhaps giving some people the impression that it's a city program, not a private program.
Especially when you name it...
So we just, I'm not, I'm not throwing a...
Marine City Parks.
I'm not throwing a cloud over anything. I like these programs. But those have been the dangers in other communities, and they're addressable. We can, we can make it right. I just want you to be aware that, you know, if I lived in a city and I got something on City Letterhead saying, hey, here's, you know, do they allow lawyers in these programs?
No, no.
Said there were some programs for challenge.
We'll see what we can figure out.
So if there was going to be a program that I like, you know, I might, I might have the impression that I'm, I'm participating in the City of Marine City program, when really, I'm attending a private function. So we just, we just have to be mindful of that. But I, I like these programs. I, I really think they do a lot.
Something that could be resolved with a disclaimer, something?
It's, it's language.
Okay.
Right.
And that's what I thought, because if they have a problem with it, and we're a partner in it, you know who they're going to call. They're going to call the city to complain about the program.
Paul, I apologize. We keep using your children there. But if, if Mr. Merchant's child is there, and, you know, your, your whole family was under the impression it was a city-sponsored program, and one of your children gets hurt, you've got, you know, then you, you call Mike Morse if he's, if he's not disbarred by then. And then you, you, you say, okay, so who, who am I going to sue? So the city has deep pockets, and you got your advertisement from the city. It seemed like a city program, so we'd have to just make sure that we, we address it.
Clarify that, right.
Right.
So are we going to put this out first to see what the community's reaction to it is? I'd rather see that first, to see...
What do you feel?
We could also do a better, more succinct summary, if that would be something you'd prefer, maybe a one-page, to make it a little easier and digestible.
And it's easier to post a single page and...
Yeah.
Yeah, there, I mean, it would help, but we want, we only want to do something that's going to be successful and, and make sense, so if, if it makes sense.
What's the feeling of the board? Does the board feel that that's something that we maybe need to try and refine and work forward with?
Definitely.
So why don't we get a motion to...
To set this matter aside and...
Yeah, table.
Just direct me to work with them, putting something out.
And then we'll come back to us.
And we can coordinate... And we can coordinate some of the language requirements that we would probably have to work out.
Okay, all right.
So we're going to put this out and get some feedback.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Blue Water Shopper, one of my pet peeves. What can we do?
Well, we, we, we actually met on this. You, you could, you could ban it, you could keep it, or maybe a middle ground. I think city manager came up with an interesting idea was to, I kind of remember back in the day, there was a spot for these things. There was your mailbox, and then there was that other thing. I never really understood it, but I think that's where these things go.
Receptacle.
And, what is it?
Receptacle?
Well, yeah, something there, but I remember, so, so maybe what we could do is, is, you know, we could continue to allow these, but those folks need to provide our, our folks with, with this thing.
What's this thing?
This.
A box?
Something that attaches.
It used to be like a. It had attached to the mailbox.
I don't know the name of it, but you know, we all know what I'm talking about, right?
Right, yeah.
It's a thing. It's a thing.
Yeah.
So.
Paper box?
That's law speak.
We would like.
Your paper box?
Yeah, we would like to be able to look into that, see if that's a middle ground that would not cut off these communications, but not have them on the ground.
I just would like them off my, the lawns, the sidewalks, the streets, the curbs.
It looks terrible.
Clout up into big piles of snow.
Right.
Especially with the red, the, the red really shows out in the piles of snow with the red blotches.
We were going to look into whether or not we could require the distributors of these materials to be involved in putting those receptors in place.
It's not considered litter, though, right?
No, it sure is. It's litter.
Well, I'm just, you know, I mean.
If I threw the, if I threw the McDonald's wrapper out the window and it landed on somebody's curb, they'd call it litter.
It would.
Right, unless you were intending it as a gift.
Oh, it's a gift?
Right.
It's a gift, all right. That keeps on giving.
Litter clerk. Mr. Merchant, I don't mean to be flippant, but litter is a state of mind when, when something goes, you know, from being a product to a litter is the state of mind of the discarder. I don't think the people who are distributing these are considering them litter when they leave their hands. It might become litter when the mayor sees them laying on the ground.
When they go through the snow blower, they become confetti?
Well, it's, it's created a problem for some people, snow blowers, it gets caught in there.
Yeah.
And then it's chewed them up.
So let us, we'll, we'll report back on that effort.
Okay.
Yeah, when, when I was talking to Bob about this, I was questioning whether or not we could do an ordinance to, in essence, require items that are placed at residences to either be placed in a receptacle, you know, either posted by the person that lives there, or the company that plans on putting something, or on the doorstep. Something to that measure, so that they're not in the lawns, they're not in the streets, they're not in the roads. It's just something that we need to make sure that is a legal way to regulate this. Not calling them trash or rubbish or throwing anything.
So don't call the police chief and ask him to write littering ticket yet.
We don't want to have a freedom of speech.
Right. And, and this in essence is, is almost somewhat similar to how we have our sign ordinance, that you can't regulate based on what the content is. You know, the state kind of changed the whole sign ordinance, that you, you have very specific guidelines, what you can and can't do, and, you know, that's potentially what we can try and do.
So if a dog leaves a gift in a yard, and they don't have to pick that up with a, with a plastic bag?
The gift would not be a trespass, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, okay. So we can't trespass either? That was my next one that I was thinking, okay. You're off the hook on this one, Jim.
Appreciate that, sir.
For now. All right, if everyone's good with that topic for now, let's move on to financial business and dispersments, including payroll for $209,055.09.
We need a motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, I make a motion to accept the payroll dispersment.
Support.
Should say the amount.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And just to be clear on that motion, that's dispersments including payroll, payroll, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So we have a motion?
Other than that, a good motion.
Thanks, I'm working on them.
It's a work in progress, I see.
That's me.
Can we get a second?
I already got one.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah, see?
I was just listening to him go through that motion. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaminsky.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Breson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to preliminary financial statements, I need a motion to receive and file.
So move.
Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. Moving on to the city manager's illustrious report.
The meetings I've attended over the last week, Trail Towns meeting, Marine City Fire Authority, TIPA Subcommittee. I had a follow-up conference call along with Mike with the DEQ regarding the water plant response that we provided to them. So we're working with them on addressing all of those issues that were in our response provided to you. Monday, March 4th, 6:00 PM is our strategic plan. I want to remind everyone about that, make sure you have it on your calendars, and that will be for board members and department heads. It is open to the public, however, we won't be taking comments or anything for that meeting. It's in essence a work session. I met with the attorney this afternoon. We reviewed quite a few outstanding issues, so we're working on some things that have been kind of hanging out there for a while, and hopefully will be coming to you guys soon. Hupchak, his last day with DPW is the 28th, and I'd like to wish him well in his retirement. And I'd also like to extend my sympathies to the family of Bud Bapchak.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager? Wow, not one, something. Let's move on to Commissioner Privilege then. Cheryl, would you like to start us out?
Just quick. I also attended the Blue Ways of St. Clair meeting yesterday at the library. And we are hosting here in Marine City, a summer, we're going to actually begin the summer paddle series in Marine City. It's going to be Wednesday, May 29th. And the paddle series can be anything, it's usually kayaks, but I mean, if you have a canoe, I guess you could join us too. So we, the Blue Ways of St. Clair is trying to bring in more recreational paddling in our area. We have the Bell River, and it goes forever in, in the back areas, and, and that's very nice to paddle on. So the, the event that's happening on the 29th, we're starting at the DNR launch, so we're going to be on the Big River for a little bit, and then up the Bell River, and then back. And then there's dinner. So one of the things that we talked about at this meeting was looking for property for a kayak launch. And so we were looking for property on the east side, preferably, of the Bell River, hopefully between the two bridges, or maybe even north of the Broadway Bridge. And so if anyone knows of anyone that has any property, we are always looking for that for recreational type things like this is. So that's, that was a very good meeting, and, and paddlers, what, the reason why we kind of wanted on the east side of the Bell River is that if somebody does come here for the day, that they could literally, you know, put their, put their kayak up on the launch, and then walk around our city. And then shop, eat, play, and then go back and, and finish their, their paddle. So that's, it's a very good idea. The second thing I wanted to remind everyone is that we, we are looking for, or the Marine City Flower Fund is looking for donations for flowers that go around our city. It's all the beautiful hanging baskets and planters and things like that that we see. I'd like the entire city to be flowered up for the summer. I think it, it's, it's beautiful, and it makes a nice pathway. You can tell everybody, you know, it's not just, you know, the downtown district, it's also the four streets that we support, which are Water, Broadway, Parker, and Shartier. So if anybody's looking to make a donation or for flowers, you can go to the city offices, and any, any amount will do to flower up our city. And that's all I had. It's on you.
Mr. Merchant?
I just want to pass along my sympathies to the Bapchak family also, and, and just wanted to say that Bauer Rose Funeral Home is helping the family at this time, and are honored to do so. And that please, if you're interested, there is a, they are having a service at Holy Cross Church on Saturday at noon to celebrate his life through Mass. And there is a gathering time right before that from 11 till noon, so people can come and share their sympathies with the family, so. Everything can be, the full of which we can be found on our website, baurrowesfuneralhome.com.
Thank you. All set then, nothing else for us? Mr. Clausen?
I just want to remind everybody with the, our spring snowstorms are beginning, that it would help if they're, live on a corner, to help us keep the streets from flooding. And you know that where their, your, your drain is in a curb, just shovel it out, Joe. You don't have to shovel the whole thing out, just above it, so that it's not frozen over and water can get to it. It also helps with the, I know with, with mine, delivery for the mail, the mail people now cross the, they don't have to go in the street, and then they're back up the driveway, they can cross across lawns and stuff. And I know I shovel a path across my two neighbors' lots and my lot, so they have a clear path to travel. So you gotta remember they're out there in this ice and snow, so, thank you.
Lisa.
Couple things. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hupchak on his retirement, and thank him for all the service to the city. And I hope he has a great retirement. I talked to him about that. I told him, do it, don't wait. I want to thank everybody that showed up for the Lions Wild Game Dinner. That went real well. You missed a lot of good food if you didn't go, but really, really good eats. On the kayak issue, we're already looking at two properties for a possible kayak launch and what we can do with it, so that's in the works. And my pet peeve, not just the drains, please shovel the sidewalks. Watching our poor mail people try to deliver mail with the ice that's on there, if you couldn't get the snow off in time, put some salt out. They had to use cleats to deliver mail, and technically they don't really have to deliver your mail if it's that treacherous. But it's just awful to see these poor people trying to get around some of the sidewalks that are just so bad, because some people just don't do them. And please watch, if you have a contractor and they're piling it up on top of a corner or at a, we have a few on here on Parker, they pile them right up on the sidewalk, and I've seen people that had to climb over the hill to get along the sidewalk or go out in the street, which is dangerous on M29. So please, we only got a little bit more winter coming, just keep them clean and try to help out those poor postal people, if anybody, so that they don't kill themselves on the sidewalks. Thanks. Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Yep, it's, we're almost there, we're getting through winter, we're almost there, so it's hopefully, I know Mike's tired of pushing it off, and I am too, and I'm tired of talking about snow. I'll be glad to move on to argue about something else. So, but, no, I'm done with snow. We've, we've had some pretty bad fires in the community in the last couple of weeks. There's some GoFundMes out there, please help some of the people out there, because people have lost everything. The brutal cold, we lost, I think, four or five structures in the community within about two, a week and a half to two-week period. So if you guys see people out there that are, you know, helping collect, please donate what you can. And hopefully they slow down, because our guys are getting tired. We had one this afternoon, so hopefully we're done for a while. With that, let's have an adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second? Okay, I didn't hear. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry.